So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Coran and a second by Ms. Graham. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we are back in open session. May I have a motion to certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Ivors and a second by Ms. Coran. Roll call, please.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Ivors?
Yes.
Ms. Cor- uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
And Mr. Lyons?
Yes. All right. Just want to restate for those who are joining us late that Ms. Franklin is joining us via electronic participation tonight. The board has approved this participation, so if you hear a strange voice, electronic voice, it's coming from over there. Next on the agenda is our public address. At each regularly scheduled meeting, the Montgomery County Public School Board allows up to thirty minutes for members of the community, students, and teachers to address the board concerning educational matters in Montgomery County. Each speaker will be allotted three, up to three minutes to speak. When you come to the mic after I call your name, please state your name and your address, and then your three minutes will begin. Tonight, we have thirteen folks who are signed up. It is possible that we're going to be buttoned up against our thirty-minute limit. If that is the case, at the end of thirty minutes, the board will take a short timeout and decide whether or not we want to extend the public address for a little bit longer. With that said, I'm going to call out two names. The first name I call out will be who is up, and then the second name will be who is in the bullpen. So first up, I have Tulio O'Reilly. And secondly, will be Kristen Webb. Is Tulio here? Tulio is not here, so Kristen Webb, are you here? I'm sorry? Says Kristen Webb. Uh, I have Crystal Webb later. Kristen Webb, okay, no Kristen Webb. Tim Boone? All right, Tim, and then after Tim will be Melissa Moore.
How are you?
Good.
I'm a president of Revolution and a member of Battle Flag for Freedom. I'm here on behalf of the students to address what we feel has been violated on their constitutional rights on the First Amendment. I'm sorry. All right. I brought some literature if I can share a copy with you.
Could you just give it to Ms. Drake?
We feel that the kids' First Amendment rights have been violated by the school. We base this on a previous lawsuit of Tinker versus Demond. It was heard in the United States Supreme Court. I could read part of it to you. It says, "The First Amendment as applied through the Fourteenth did not permit public schools to punish a student for wearing a black armband as anti-war protest, absent any evidence that the rule was necessary to avoid substantial interference with school discipline on the rights of others." It goes on to say that the decision was made in the Supreme Court, a seven-to-two decision, that the students and the teachers' constitutional right does not stop at the schoolhouse doors. This lawsuit is still being used as a basis up till today. You know, we feel that, if I can speak to my heart, you know, we know these students violated the dress code. It's been in place for a good while. And being in contact with all these kids, they are very willing to follow the dress code. Where the problem lies is where the school has reached out into the parking lot and personal property. We realize that is still school property, but it's also public property. It's publicly funded. And then they've reached out to the parents, too, and wrote parents trespassing notices, dropping their children off for what they have on their vehicles. It's a clear violation of their constitutional rights, and that's where that we are filing with ACLU and following other legal means to put a stop to this. If the school board could intervene, you know, the students are happy to follow the dress code. We just, we want our constitution back in the parking lots.
Thank you. Next up is Melissa Moore, and after Melissa Moore, James Cloggy. Melissa Moore here? Okay. James? And after James will be Fred McKenzie.
My name is James Clogga. I live at 220 Huntington Lane in Blacksburg, Virginia. Thank you for this opportunity to address you on the topic of Confederate symbols. I was the District F representative on the school board from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and three, so during, and so during the period of unrest at Christiansburg High School, when the school board banned these symbols from the school. While public institutions need to respect the rights of free speech, they also need to enforce its limits. We had fights at Christiansburg High School at that time provoked by the flag, so the flag literally constituted fighting words, which are not protected by free speech. I hope that was enough to show that violence is likely at CHS when this flag is allowed. I would dearly hope that you do not need to allow the flag on school grounds from time to time just to see a fight still break out. I believe we should trust the judgment of the administration as to that likelihood, and allow teachers to do their job of providing an education in a safe environment in which all students feel welcome to learn. I hope all sides to this issue realize the extent to which our African-American neighbors can feel intimidated by Confederate symbols. There is no disputing that the symbols were often used in connection with intimidation, and the scarves of that intimidation continue to be felt through the generations. The presence of Confederate symbols induces the need for an African-American person to decide whether to stand up to the symbol or to allow it to pass, but in either case, they do not contribute to a peaceful and welcoming environment that is conducive to learning. Finally, I would like to express my concern for the students who want to display Confederate symbols. I hope that this is not a desire to intimidate others, but a desire to identify with and belong to something bigger than themselves. This is itself admirable, and as all students need a sense of identity and self-worth to flourish in school and in life. For many students, this can come from identifying with their southern heritage. I hope that the high school provides outlets for this sense of identity, perhaps with clubs for enthusiasts of bluegrass music or storytelling or hunting or NASCAR. And I'm wearing my Crooked Road pin. I'm a fan of southern music. If these clubs don't already exist, maybe you could encourage them. There are so many aspects of southern culture that are not connected with intimidation. Maybe students could find a sense of identity and heritage in those activities and not in connection with controversial symbols. And I hope the adults who support these students could help them to cultivate a love for all these positive aspects of southern culture, yet not wrap them in the Confederate flag. Thank you for your time and for your service to the community. I know there are a number of people here tonight who don't plan to speak, but I wonder if people who support the position that I've laid out would be willing to stand up at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize for butchering your name. Next is Fred McKenzie, and after Fred McKenzie is Crystal Webb.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Fred McKenzie, and I reside here in Christiansburg at seventeen fifty-three Lyons Drive. The issue here at the high school is a concern, not only for the people in this room, but it's a concern for everyone in Christiansburg, black, white, whatever color. Now, our educational system is very important to our kids here today. The educational facilities, the environment for education, the safety of our children, and the school management. All of those factors are very important for our school environment at this time. Our children are sent to school to learn, and especially, there's a safety issue here at the schools. And I would just like to commend the school management, Dr. Sears, for his efforts there and the job that he's doing at Christiansburg High School. Yes, changes will occur, and they will happen in the future as they have in the past. But we have to be prepared for those changes. We must do whatever is right and necessary, and what we can't do, what we can do to protect our children and their future. Today, our middle schools are manned with law enforcement agents, all the middle schools and high schools in Montgomery County. And this has a positive effect on the learning environment because they are there to help control and keep the peace. As I look at that, on that wall over there is our flag. It says, we all say this quite frequently, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all." That's my flag. And I just want to say that, finally, that this issue is, a lot more people should be here for this, and a lot more people need to be involved. And the other part of it is that I hope all of us realize that God will bless America. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Crystal Webb, and after Crystal Webb is Sheila Basham.
Good evening. My name's Crystal Webb. I live at seventeen Lee High Court in Christiansburg, Virginia. My personal involvement in this is, three weeks ago, the parents were told that the Confederate symbol, flag, bumper sticker, whatever, was not welcome. Whether it was said or I feel this way. Whether it was implied or whether-
Step up to a little closer, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Lord, if they can't hear me, we're in trouble. Whether I'm, I took it personally or it was actually stated that I was not welcome at my son's school for the first time ever. I'm not really for sure right now, three weeks later. I have personally always believed that there is a proper way and protocol to do things. We peacefully assembled. Have I learned that there is a concern about the Confederate flag and what it stands for? Yes, personally. Took it upon myself to meet with the whole, the community, anybody that would hear me, see me, not try to run me over. I'm, I was fine with just being that, to back up three weeks and just take the personal property off of this and me whether I'm welcome at the school or not. Today, I was with a student who got the phone call from his mom that his Facebook post last night was telling everybody publicly that could see it that he was going to come in here and start shooting. He's so pure-hearted. He just thanked people for standing up for him. And they want to be from the South and to say that he was going to do something so awful. Had me in tears this morning at seven o'clock at the school. I don't know, y'all are the ones that decide these things, but I know that there's a huge number of us that just want to be southern and don't want it to be offensive. I don't know what that looks like. I believe that everybody can come together and make these decisions as the adults that we are and the proper levels of the school, whatever that needs to be. I love everybody in this county. And really, until recently, I haven't had to discern who's black and white. I taught my kids. We love everybody. We're community, we're school. We come together, we figure it out. So that's what I hope we do. Thank y'all.
Sorry, thank you. Next up is Sheila Basham, and after Sheila is David Reynolds. Sheila?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Next up is David Reynolds. And after David Reynolds, I think it says Odell something, maybe?
Hi, my name is David Reynolds. I am at twenty-one twenty-one Dominion Drive in Christiansburg. I'm from Littleton, New Hampshire. I grew up there. That flag, I've had that flag on my jacket since I was a little kid. To me, that flag represented anti-government. It stood for not allowing big government. And that's what is happening here. We're seeing too much big government. We don't want anybody to tell these kids they can't do this, they can't do that. I was in school in eighty-six. Profile school, which is in Bethlehem, New Hampshire. They tried to set a dress code where kids couldn't wear t-shirts, and it got to the point where they lit that school on fire. Let's not let it go there. People need to let it go. Let people be who they want to be. It's like a black friend told me, "Flags are like mud puddles. Tells you where not to step." That's all it means. If you don't like that person, hey, you know when to stay away from that person. Just food for thought.
Thank you. Next is, I think it's, I can't read it quite well. It's Odell?
Aliff.
Yes, that's it. And after that? I have Tim Boone, is there a different Tim Boone? Okay. After that will be Anna Dalton.
Hey, how are you? I'm Odell Aliff. I live at twenty-one seventy-five Dominion Drive, Christiansburg, Montgomery County. And I'm the one that got this citation for going on the parking lot with my flags on the truck. And Mr. Sears came out there and told me, I'd been doing this for like two, three months. No problems, okay? Then he came out there and tells me that I'm going to have to either leave off the parking lot or take the flags down, which I chose not to. Because my son actually has rented a space for the, from the school to park his truck. He don't have a truck right now. It's my truck. Okay? Then, so Dr. Sears says he's going to come out there or have an officer come out there and write me, "Ain't no trespassing" for the parking lot. Okay? Then he comes out there and does that. Mister, is it Mr. Wall, I believe? He came out there and he tried to explain it to Mr. Sears that the Montgomery County parking lot is, consists of the whole Montgomery County property. All right, I'm a taxpayer. Don't I own that parking lot, a part of it? Okay, then, so they go ahead and write me this. Then he comes back and says, uh, "I can pull my, I can bring my truck into the line for the pickup kids or the drop-off lane, and I can sit there as long as I want to, far as that, and pick up my son and leave." All right, it takes me twenty, thirty minutes now to go through that line. Where I was there about ten minutes by waiting on him to get out of school, and we was out of there. No trouble. And then that's pretty much all I've got.
Thank you. Next is Anna Dalton, and after Anna Dalton is Josh Moore.
Good evening. A couple of weeks ago, as most of us, I watched television, and I saw that there were flags on the campus of Christiansburg High School. And I looked at that and I thought, oh, okay. It's not within my experience, but then I did get a recollection. And I remember the face. I didn't grow up around here, but I could remember looking at the face of Alvin Hume one day when we were at a meeting, and discussion came up, and the issue was race, and his face was so hurt that I could see into him. And I remember thinking, oh, wow. These issues are in their lives. It's, it's striking, it's hurtful. Now, in southwest Virginia, anyone would do anything for someone. If you need something, they'll take the shirt off their back. Well, in this case, we need to have something not be there because we don't want to hurt person. And that same idea of looking after our neighbors. So I am concerned about it. I do want to commend the school. It's a tough thing to run a school, but they are following their procedures, and we need to support the schools and the school property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Josh Moore.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I think that, oh, my name is Joshua Moore. I come from way eighty-three Economy Street, Christiansburg, Virginia. I'm here on behalf of Kids on Track. And I think that there's a generational gap that's going on here. I do, I can say that a lot of the parents that come from the, this Confederate reign or whatever, they, it's a small number. It's a small number that can actually express that this is hatred. We have children that are in these classrooms that are getting suspended, that cohabitate with African-American, Indian, Spanish, like, it's a word of diversity right now. I feel as though that it's almost impossible to be racist when you're a child, when you're a student, when you are in high school. Now, suspending kids over wearing a Confederate flag, okay, hurrah. What it does is, is it raises an uprising. People will protest because what we're doing is we are kind of stopping the progression of this educational thing that we have going on. Even somebody like Louis Farrakhan, who is not about integration. He is about, he's nationalistic about black national rights. He states, "Keep the flag up." He states that that's the only kind of true unity that America has expressed at once. He states that a lot of times, we get a lot of chaos through another flag, and that's not my business to even talk about. But what I'm here for is to explain that these kids on football teams with black kids, Spanish kids, Chinese kids, it don't matter. So it's like, the kind of pressures that are put upon these children within this educational system is a distraction. More so than I can say, it's like, when these kids are on TV every day talking about, "This is our heritage, this is our flag," just like I read in a pamphlet that I got soon as I got in here, maybe a club should be established about the bluegrass, the NASCAR, the southern heritage, the biscuits in gravy, you know, the baked macaroni and cheese. That's southern heritage, and that's not only, that don't go to the shades of your skin. Like, if I put my hood on, and I was walking down the street and it was nighttime, somebody would tell me, "You a thug. You shouldn't have your hood on." I had a woman tell me already, "Oh, you shouldn't walk through this neighborhood with a hood on." That's not the flag telling me that. That's an individual telling me that. And I just came to stand up for the children, man, because the kids, they need that education. If y'all keep suspending them for this, it's like, how are they going to get educated? It don't make sense. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. That was the last person on the list, although I did see Tulio O'Reilly come in. Tulio, do you wish to address the board?
Thanks, Mr. Lyons. I'm Tulio O'Reilly. I live at eighteen sixty Radford Road, Christiansburg. I have children at CMS and children at CHS. And I just, I came tonight kind of torn. I'm a second-generation U.S. citizen. I married a lady from southwest Virginia in the Appalachian Mountains. I work at a church that twenty-two board members sat down together about this issue because it's important to the people that they represent. And I'm here as a parent, I want to make that clear. I'm probably here with some frustration and disappointment because I feel like that there was a lack of education to our community that we've got to process. And I think it diluted what there is in freedom of speech. Mr. Ivors, I appreciate that you asked for it to be on tonight's agenda. And I felt like that communicated something, but didn't communicate a process. And that process allowed for there to be continued what I consider disruptive behavior. And again, diluted what I think people were trying to say. I also got frustrated that the media wasn't what I feel accurately corrected. Students were, what I understand, there was a discipline issue. It wasn't about the Confederate fat flag, and that was miscommunicated. It was about parking passholders, not everyone. And I felt like that's not been communicated. And I had the opportunity to talk to Dr. Sears. I got frustrated because I didn't see it being implemented consistently. And I think that's a fallacy. You know, school start time was handled with, I felt, a great deal of process and education, but we can't assume that everyone sees that and then relates it to something else. I'm concerned that there's an inconsistency that you're allowing CMS students to feed into a school, and there's two different policies. Twelve-year-olds don't, that confuses them. And I realize there's not a problem at CMS, but I, that's confusing to my kids. I'm just being upfront with you. I think the other thing that disappointed me was I intercepted some communication from principals to their students and how effective the administrators of this county were being to have discussion points for teachers that were accurate, making sure kids had the right information. But I never heard about that out there in the public. And that was frustrating to me because I feel like we have good administrators. I learned this week that Christiansburg High School put together students, the stakeholders in the building, from each group. And they were there talking about how things were ambiguous and how they needed to be cleared up and what students understand that have to abide by policies. But I've not seen that in the media. And I've not seen everything, but I'm, I'm just, I'm concerned that there's a lot of decision-making going on without a lot of accurate information. And I'm going to ask you, as the school board, I need that shored up.
Your time is up, I'm sorry. Thank you. That is all the people that I have signed up. How much time do we have left? Four minutes? Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address this board? No, you can only do it once, I'm sorry. See a hand if you want to come to the board? Come up to the podium, state your name and your address. Since that's the only hand I see, this will be the last speaker.
Good evening. My name is John Sills. I reside at two oh-one Hartwood Crossing in Blacksburg. My children have attended Blacksburg High School and Middle School. My wife has been a substitute teacher in this area for ten years, working in many of the schools in the area. Just a comment. The Federal Appeals Court upheld, uphold schools bans on the Confederate flag and other protest shirts. That's Hardrick and Hayward. That was, the Circuit Court came out with that on March twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen. So the school board is within its rights to do exactly what they did. When we look at the Code of Conduct- When we look at the code of conduct, what I'm requesting is that we have consistent procedures across all of the schools. It's unfortunate that my wife, and even myself, when I visit other schools, still have to encounter, even at Blacksburg High School, the Confederate flag worn by students. And it's clear that the students don't quite understand what that means. In section eight of the dress code, it talks about, or the code of conduct, it talks about dressing inappropriately. I understand why students must dress appropriately, but that rule needs to be applied to all schools. Someone just mentioned that there was some confusion. Yes, it does create confusion. And yes, the Confederate flag is displayed at Blacksburg High School, it's displayed at Blacksburg Middle School, and no action is being taken. So I ask that you revise your code of conduct to include all schools in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. With that said, public address is closed. Next on the agenda is consent items. If there are no, if no board member has anything to pull from consent, we will consider all consent items approved. Anyone? Very good. Next on the agenda is the personnel report. May I have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Karan, and a second, I'll give it to Ms. Woolsey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Personnel report has been approved. Next on the agenda is our financial reports. May I have a motion to approve the payment of the bills?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Karan, and a second by Ms. Graham. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills have been paid. Next on the agenda is superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcements. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Kastner.
First, I'm delighted to be here.
And we, oh, and let me say this, I need to welcome you, thank you. I've been meeting with him so often, I thought everyone else has known him. We do want to welcome Dr. Kevin Kastner to the, uh, to Montgomery County. He is serving as our interim superintendent. Thank you for your service, and we hope, uh, and we know that there's gonna be a, a good couple of months with you.
Thank you.
I'd like to add also that Dr. Kastner, I believe, met with everybody, uh, for coffee or tea or whatever. And, uh, our meeting lasted well over an hour, and we, and it was great. And I want to thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Moving on, I'd like to go through with the first grant proposal regarding the school breakfast program, uh, expansion. As you're aware, during the Virginia's two thousand and sixteen state budget, that includes funds to support increasing the number of school breakfast meals served to students through an alternative ser, service program. Montgomery County is phasing in this implementation of this alternative model. Includes grab-to-go breakfast at elementary schools and grab-to-go as well at second-chance breakfast at middle and high schools. If this grant is funded, Montgomery County will receive an additional five cents for each breakfast served with a value estimated at seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars for the division for this current year. Tonight, we are asking the board to approve this grant.
May I have a motion to accept, to approve the grant as titled?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Graham, and a second by Ms. Karan. Any discussion, board members?
Uh, I, I, thank you. I had the pleasure this morning of, uh, going to Price's Fork Elementary and observing the grab-and-go, and I can't tell you how impressed I was. Um, in fifteen, twenty minutes, they served two hundred students for breakfast. And I talked to some of them, and they loved the breakfast ideas. Um, you know, some liked Fruit Loops better than Frosted Flakes, but they, they all loved the ideas. It, it's really amazing. It has incre, it has doubled the amount of students having breakfast, um, just at Price's Fork. So I, I think that's the way we want to have our kids starting their day.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes, um, thank you. Does this take away from, uh, educational time, or is it before school starts? And they're eating in the classroom?
I can, I can answer that, I observed that too. Um, so the students, for instance, uh, Price's Fork starts at eight o'clock, nine o'clock, whatever, eight o'clock. So, um, the students are finished with the grab-and-go and head to their classrooms about ten till, and they have a designated area in their classrooms where they're eating so that they're not eating at their desk, and it's more cleanup. Um, and they have, they are sitting there eating while they're doing their morning work. Um, they're observing announcements, so it is not impacting their instruction. In fact, it's getting there in, them in time to hear the announcements, which they were missing otherwise.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions, board members? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, the grant proposal is, is approved.
The next item is, uh, Bullying Prevention Month. October is a month we set aside to recognize bullying prevention activities. Current estimates are that thirty percent of the youth in the United States are affected by bullying. I'd like to at least mention to board members, this bullying issue is getting even more complex. The whole idea of cyberbullying is in a whole different realm that at least are things that systems are having to look at in addition. I'm not familiar how the policy's affected here, but maybe during this month, that's the type of thing that, uh, we could re, at least look at in our understanding, and I'd like to know a little bit more about that. It's suggested that over a hundred and sixty thousand students miss school every day due to fear of billing, of being bullied. As you know, Montgomery County has their own Winning Choices campaign every year and character education activities embedded in the curriculum. Tonight, I'm asking you to approve this resolution to recognize Bullying Prevention Month in addition to our year-round activities.
May I have a motion to approve the Bullying Prevention Month resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Ivers, and a second by Ms. Woolsey. Any discussion, board members?
Uh, yes. Um, it says here that where I, where thirty percent of youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying. I, I think, I think our, our diversity team has really done a great job in handling the, the bullying in, in Montgomery County, and, and I think they need to be recognized for that. But also, I want to bring this up, um, I don't know where I saw this, maybe someone else can help me with this, but I saw a school that installed a red bench, and they put it in their playground. And students who were new to the building, who needed a friend, or students who came to school that day and were feeling down or, or, or were being bullied, went over and sat on the bench. And automatically, other students saw this and went over to assist that student. And I thought that was phenomenal. I just want to bring that out. I don't know if that's anything, um, is Dan here? Dan, I want a bench at every school by the end of the week? Uh, I, I just thought that was a phenomenal idea. I just thought that was a phenomenal idea that this, this, it's like a regular park bench, painted red or whatever color you want, and it just helped kids who felt down, felt they needed help or whatever, to go and sit on that bench. And then other folks came, talked to them, even teachers were aware of this. Anyway, one more thing.
May I ask Lois to maybe respond? She had something to add to this.
Just thought I'd share that you might be glad to know that we have those at a server of our schools, Gilbert Lincoln, Harding, I think Bellevue. I'd have to check to see if they're at each school. But in most cases, they were, um, they were placed there because of a student wanting, wanting it to be placed there, and family members donating and having the bench built.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, board members? All right, all those in favor of approving the Bully Prevention Month resolution, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? It is approved.
The next item, the Virginia Retirement Resolution for the Hybrid Retirement Plan. At the last meeting, Ms. Blackburn and Joe McAlondra, I got that right? Presented information for the opportunity for Montgomery County Schools to offer an employee-sponsored hybrid four oh three B plan. It is recommended by the administration to not participate in this program. As a result, the board must pass a resolution to not allow the employer-sponsored hybrid four oh three B plan. This motion is presented to you tonight for your approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution to not allow direct hybrid voluntary contributions to an employer-sponsored hybrid for four oh three B retirement plan?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Graham, and a second by Mr. Ivers. Any discussion? I'm gonna ask, Joe, could you come and just clarify exactly what it is that we are, uh, once again, I just so, we reiterate it here as we're voting on it, exactly what it is that we're not approving?
Yes, sir. You're opting out of sponsoring the, uh, part of the four, uh, the employee hybrid plan that is the employer-sponsored side of the hybrid. There's two sides of the hybrid plan now. One is the, uh, defined contribution and defined benefit is the other. Defined contribution is the side where you're, we are not sponsoring. And that's where we would have fiduciary responsibility of the four oh three and the four fifty-seven plans.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, board members?
And we're really waiting on it to mature and be more robust.
Yes, ma'am. And the VRS to really figure out how all the contributions are going to be made and then returned to the school division.
Okay. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? The resolution not to allow direct hybrid voluntary contributions is approved.
At this time, we would like to give the E-Back Pack update. Jennifer Weaver and Harvey Goodman and Julie Kraft will provide an update for the second implementation year of the One-on-One Tablet Initiative.
Dr. Kastner, Mr. Lyons, members of the board. I'm delighted to hear, to talk to you about the second year of the program. It all really started at the end of last year. We met with principals, and they set the instructional goal of, we want to get tablets in the hands of all students within the first two weeks of school year. And that is a great thing because that basically tells you there's enthusiasm in the school, and everybody is really on board and just charging forward. It was a tall order. We had to get a whole new set of tablets purchased and configured and installed, um, by the beginning of August. That's kind of a challenge because with our school year and first semester being over by Christmas, our start time falls August eleventh, and the fiscal year starts July first. So Katie is a partner, this is a whole-division partner, worked with me to do a delicate dance and make sure that we got the devices here as soon as possible, and my crew began work on it. At the same time as this was going on, we had to reconfigure, update all the tenth-grade tablets at, that had been out there. Plus, we did find a few that needed some repair. It kind of challenged my crew to work smarter, more effective. They did this in a, um, just phenomenal fashion. We now image these machines ourselves in-house, which saves us thirty dollars a device. It also increases our speed, our turnaround. We've also begun to do all the repairs on these devices, um, in-house. So our turnaround time, our downtime to students is much faster than it's been. We're turning tablets around within usually two to four days. So just wonderful stuff. On top of that, we, you all voted last year to upgrade the bandwidth to the county by up two hundred additional megabytes. That's sixty-seven percent increase. Well, what that meant to my crew was they had to touch every machine in the district in order to get those reconfigured for the new bandwidth. And it shows the commitment that my department has had, the total buy-in of what a great thing this is, and I'm happy to say, we pulled it off. And we had all those tablets delivered in the first two weeks of school. Jennifer?
From the instructional side of things, we really appreciate all the hard work that the technology department, uh, put into making the devices available to our students, and also the work that they did, particularly the ITRTs, to make sure that our students and parents were educated on how to use them safely. Um, but we most appreciate all the work that the ITRTs have done in supporting our teachers. Uh, we've talked many times about the fact that the only way teachers are comfortable with new devices, new technology, new initiatives, um, is to get that coaching and feedback and hand-to-hand support. And the ITRTs really have done that. They've made sure that they're comfortable using that technology and integrating it into their classroom. I've shown you this slide many times for many different purposes, um, but I just wanted to remind us this evening that although this has been a big initiative, and seems like a separate initiative, it really is a vital part of our goal to increase student engagement. Um, you're gonna see a few examples tonight, and you have in some of the other patient, presentations we've done. But I just wanted to give you a couple examples of, um, things that particularly relate to student engagement. We've been working hard on increasing student response rate so that teachers aren't speaking to students one at a time, that whole classes are able to give teachers feedback so that teachers know how students are doing in that moment and can adjust to their instructional needs. It also has played an important role in students being able to assess their own progress so they know right away how they're doing and don't have to wait to get that feedback from teachers. It's, um, gone a long way in helping students to learn to collaborate and organize with teachers and with each other. Um, Google Classroom's been a big addition to do that, um, for writing and many other ways. It's helped students access content that's on their developmental level. Um, we've been able to take much larger advantage of our intervention programs like Read One Eighty and Math One Eighty, um, and we've also been able to take advantage of all the additional resources that come with our textbooks. Going forward, I'm very excited to be a part of all the engaging experiences that the one-to-one device has allowed our students and our teachers. Um, and I know that we're gonna continue to have teachers who feel more comfortable and students who feel more comfortable with the technology, um, and are gonna lead us to have an even more engaging high school classroom experience.
I'd like to show you guys, um, just a quick snippet of a video that you saw back in the spring.
On some of the readings that we're doing in my English class that are accessible on the tablets, so they don't have to take their English textbook home. Um, all they do is take their tablet. The questions are there, the text is there that they can access at any time. Um, and if a student has missed that day, the agenda is posted in Google Classroom. Uh, as they're homesick, even the day of their absence, they can still do the assignments that we were doing in class. And they can return to class, um, caught up. Um, I've had two students on Homebound, um, and we've connected through Google Classroom, uh, for their assignments. Um, they don't have to come physically to the school to pick up assignments. They're all there for them on their tablets in real time, um, with links to any videos, with links to any notes we might go over. And those things become a reference tool for them later, uh, for future assignments. It's been outstanding.
So, she says it better than I can, we all know that. But we're gonna continue to focus on instruction. That was, that was where we were when we started, that's where we're gonna continue going. But with the addition of one thousand seven hundred ninety-three Dell tablets for the ninth and tenth grade students, it's a great instructional benefit. To get started on year two of this initiative, ITRTs worked with principals to plan and deliver parent meetings during freshman orientations and open houses at all four of our high schools. They then worked together to plan tablet delivery and training sessions for the ninth and tenth grade students. These sessions occurred during the first weeks of school. Our curriculum supervisors continue to add electronic resources that are compatible with the tablets, especially textbook adoptions. Media specialists are the central contact for students, teachers, and ITRTs for the initiative and are extremely important to keeping the program running on a daily basis. ITRTs continue to lead professional development focused on integrating electronic resources into lessons. And our principals- And our principals are going to be learning the same strategies that the ITRTs are delivering to classroom teachers in targeted professional development sessions. One great benefit is that all MCPS students and staff members are provided with a Google account on our @mobilemcps.org domain. This is a resource that's available to students on campus and off campus. As Jennifer Weaver mentioned, teachers are planning and delivering lessons which incorporate online resources like Google Classroom, research, web-based textbook materials, and both formative and summative assessments. An example of an online formative assessment that teachers like to use because it's fun and engaging is called Kahoot. I would like to introduce Kathryn Breeze and Bert Milburn. They're our ITRTs at CHS, I'm sorry, EMHS, AHS, and BHS. Bert moved around on us. Kathryn and Bert are going to give you a quiz. I hope you've been paying attention, using Kahoot. I do hope you have fun with it, though.
That will be great.
There will be a winner.
Give me just a moment to get set up. Are you going to check to make sure everybody's in the right place?
I'm going to stay close by immediately.
Kahoot is an activity used by teachers to both challenge students and assess student learning using the tablets in their instruction. On your iPads, on your tablets or phone, school board members and audience members are welcome to participate. As long as you have Internet access, you can access this site. And in just a moment, I'll have it up here on the screen. And I believe I can do that now. Give it just a moment. You're going to go with any web browser to Kahoot.it. And once you go to the site, you will click on "Join Game" and enter the PIN that you see on the projection screen. In the background, you see an example of a classroom using Kahoot right now. And you notice everyone is using school-appropriate nicknames. Thank you very much. And once you see that your name is appearing on the screen, you're in and you're ready to go. So I hope we get a few audience members to participate. It's rather fun. Give it just another moment. When I get a cue from you all that all the board members are ready and in, we'll be ready to go. Now, as we start the game, I want to mention that you must read the questions up here on the projection. Now, think of yourself as students in a classroom. It'll be a little bit more conducive, front of the room is there, easy to see. On your device, your iPads, your phone, all you will see is answer choices. So you must read the question on the screen and then you will respond. And as soon as you respond, you're through until the next question. You earn points both for correct answers and the quickness of your correct responses. So speed counts as well. Now, you can see where this is going to attract some of the students. A little competition is always nice. It's a friendly competition. Looks like we're all set, correct? Okay, you're in. All right. If you happen to have not gotten in at this time, you can still log in. The number will stay on the screen and you can join midway. Here's your first question. And it's set for 20 seconds. Notice the teacher sees how many have answered already. And you beat the clock. Everyone entered with nine seconds to spare. Now, here you see a graph of how many. Now, in a moment, I'm going to click on that one, we're going to, no, I'm kidding. No, but as a teacher, you can assess, they got it. They understand. I can move right along. If you saw more balanced between who got it right and who got it wrong, this is when the teacher might focus on, okay, we need to discuss this a little more, maybe we need to review. Instant, it's right there. And what the students really like is seeing who's in the lead. And right now, we have a smiley Betsy who's barely in the lead. Okay? So here we go. Question two. Now we'll move right through this. Look how quick you got. Betsy's still in the lead. Ooh, Joey the Hut. Now you're wishing you didn't use your real name, right?
Like an algebra problem, you have to answer it.
Oops. Oh, we have a new leader here. Now, just imagine a middle school or a high school. Yeah, she'll see lots of comments, hear lots of comments like that. It gets quite animated and the kids really enjoy it as well as the teacher. And it is a learning tool, it's not just a game. And I might also add that you have other choices beyond true and false. So we're keeping it simple, but there are other choices as well. Joey the Hut. 27 points different. That was record time, 15 seconds left. Outstanding. A little bit more of a lead there. Still close.
I can't hit this thing any faster.
That's what I'm saying. She just came on there, exactly. I agree. I'm thinking, hitting the same time she is at her.
Some sort of fix here.
I did, but I agreed.
A little bit of a trick question here.
Where's my answer?
Somebody didn't make it. Two correct responses there, right? Remember, and Mr. Goodman said this very specifically, so I trust you were paying attention. And you were.
See, that puts me on the board.
Now.
You kicked me half, Kina.
Sorry.
This one, I want you to pay a little attention to the video in the background and see if you can figure out what's going on here. That was the first shipment of tablets arriving in technology and as they were unloading the vans, and if you could have taken a look later down the hall, it was towers and towers of box after box for a couple hundred feet, I'd say. Okay, one more shot. Joey the Hut, 44 points. Hot on the heels, NM. Everybody's quite close. Although Collaborate Effectively didn't rank very highly with you all. That's really the higher-level things going on here, but that's true. Very, very good. Now, the teacher can also export the results from this to a spreadsheet, save it in some device, and they could actually use this as an assessment. So it's one of the fun things that we try and show teachers that they can do with their tablets, with their classes, and it's been working very well. Do you all have any questions?
That was fun.
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
And not to sound negative in any way because I think it's great. I appreciate everything you've done. I know you guys have worked tremendously. But one of my concerns is, and I know one of the reasons we chose a certain tablet that we chose was its effectiveness to run certain things, but they are so heavy. And you know, and for those students that it's in the whole class and they don't have to take home their textbook, but there's a lot of students that are in upper-level classes that still have to take home all their textbooks and these really, really heavy tablets because they're heavy. So is there not a tablet two years down the road that might be the same technologically thing that we could relook at that's not so heavy?
I missed in my notes. Actually, we reassess every year and that's one of the first things we do is we gather the teachers together and look at the various devices that are there and what the other ones are. And the program became actually more flexible this year. It's no longer just a tablet initiative. We can use laptops, we can use, now we can use Chromebooks, which we couldn't before. But the teachers selected the Dell again for what it can do. So again, we're always reassessing and we're always consulting with the teachers and the students to some extent to find out what is the device that they want. And the Dell, it's not going to be with us forever, so change is going to come and we're going to have to look at different devices down the road.
I mean, am I right? Do you not think it's, I mean, you were shaking your head, yes, it's very heavy. And that was one of the things, all the students are like, you don't even want to take it home, it's so heavy, I don't even want, you know, and that's, I don't, that can, you know, we all know as adults, if you've got to carry and carry and carry, that becomes negative and you tend not to do it, you don't use it as much, and we don't want that to happen.
Well, I will say that one of the reasons that it's a little heavier than some other tablets is because there's a battery in the keyboard, too. And that was one of the reasons this device was selected because it has two batteries. So that, it's a trade-off, you know, it's.
Right, and I get that. And like I said, I think it's great and I think it's wonderful, so by no means do I want to sound negative, but those can cause negative adverse effects if we're not careful.
And if I might add, we've been going around to talk with the 9th and 10th graders to solicit their feedback, and that was one of the things that they all mentioned. And I just said, we're building your body as well as your mind.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I think there's no doubt that this is giving us leaps and bounds into the 21st century. And I just, I'll be going off the board at the end of December and I just want to, I hope that this continues because it's just wonderful. I've got neighbors and grandchildren who are in this program and they just think it's great and I've been watching this and it's, it's the 21st century and we need to be there.
Any other comments, Board members?
To tag along with that, of course, it's a wonderful thing and I was hesitant initially, probably you will remember, when we were discussing this initiative, whether we should do it or not, whether we have money or not. We are doing wonderfully. As budget year approaching, do you have enough personnel? Is broadband enough? You know, what will be, if I have a magic wand, what will your wish list look like? To do it better or to continue?
I would say we're on plan now. Bandwidth is, there is both a state and federal initiative with targets as part of the E-Rate Program where we are targeted to do one gigabyte of Internet bandwidth is what they're asking schools to be targeting for by 2017. So that's going to grow regardless of this initiative. All the things that Lois and Jennifer have me doing these days are really their applications, their remediation, it's all Internet-based. So that's going to continue to grow. And the other piece, if you remember the plan, we're looking to add another tech with the next set in the coming year. And I believe everything is projecting out quite well and the one tech is, will be adequate for the remainder of the program.
Good to hear, thank you.
Any other comments, Board members? What's my prize? Starbucks?
I'll give you a little.
There you go, piece of candy.
All right. The last part of the superintendent reports, I just wanted to make comment. I haven't been here but less than a week, but I have had a chance to get in a third of the schools. An observation. I've been in some schools that have been built in the last 10 years and I've been in some schools that have been around over 50 years. The floors of all schools are clean enough to eat off. The type of work that's being done by the staff that shows the pride in the schools, I think is amazing. I see purposeful learning and I'm just saying, everything looks in good hands. In addition, I think what you can expect from me, I will try at least each month to make the rounds for all schools. It's just something I've always done. It's where all the good things are happening. The same thing I'd like to pledge to you, I'd like to do the same thing with Board members. We'll be at a different level of discussion and we'll get into some of the details when we have our next round. In addition, some of my other observations in regard to some of the work being done in the professional development, we're going to talk about it a little bit later in the meeting, but I've really enjoyed my first week here in this system and I'm very happy to be here.
Thank you, Dr. Kastner. All right, moving on to unfinished business. Board members, anyone have any unfinished business? Other than, I know Ms. Franklin wants to make a statement. Anyone else have anything before we turn it over to Ms. Franklin? All right, Ms. Franklin, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Raymond Lyons. And this is, is unfinished business because the Board did have a discussion at our last Board meeting concerning the Confederate flag. This flag has been a disruption in our schools since I came on this Board. And that is one of the reasons, or the reason why it was banned at Christiansburg High School. And discussions that I've had with folks in the community, there were, you know, the question has been raised, we haven't had disruptions. Well, we still have had disruptions and that's why it's still banned. It's, the ban is still there. And if that ban was, were to be lifted, I believe we would have more disruption. Our mission, our goal is, and we stated repeatedly, is to create a safe learning environment for all students. Well, with that flag present in our schools, we are not upholding that. We are not creating a safe environment for all students. And that is black students, white students, and any other students we have in our school district. I have talked to children throughout the years and when the topic of the flag comes up, their heads drop, their demeanor changes because they believe that flag is there and that in some cases it is used as a threatening emblem toward them. That's not what we want in our buildings. We talked tonight of... We talked tonight about bullying. That flag is used to bully people. I believe it was somewhat stated tonight, you see that flag in like a mud puddle, you know where not to tread. Do we want that in our buildings? Do we want children to feel that way? Do we want adults to feel that way? Our code of conduct says this is not to be worn, or any other emblem, or color in related to gangs, that would cause people to feel fear, or intimidation, or to be threatened. We don't allow those, and we shouldn't allow this in any of our buildings. Yes, it is confusing to folks as to why here and why not here. Well, I'm here to say that I appreciate every person who came and spoke tonight. I have always encouraged everyone to come and speak and let the board hear what they have to say. I did it when I was a parent, and I thank all of you for coming and letting us hear what you feel about this issue. It's a very important issue, and I believe we, as a board, need to make a decision as to how we're going to proceed in this county with this flag. And I hope that it will be on the agenda for discussion at our next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Anyone else want to follow up Ms. Franklin's comments?
I just want to make sure that it's on the agenda for next meeting.
Anyone else?
I just want to make a brief statement to everyone who came out tonight to say, just as with all things dealing with policy, we, as a board, always take things under consideration. We've heard two different sides of things tonight, two different avenues of ways and wishes to which this board to go. We will, as with all things, take everything under consideration, and we will, if we deem necessary, make policy changes. It will be a process that we go through. I think it's already been clearly asked by several board members for it to be on our next agenda. And I... We'll do that. We'll have... We'll continue to have the discussion. This is a very, very difficult issue. I know that several of us, myself included, wake up in the morning over the past couple of weeks, not wanting to have to deal with this type of situation. And I have been asked by several folks about where I stand on it personally. And I just want to say this, and I've said this to several folks, I've said it to the media, although I don't think anyone has actually quoted me on what I've said. For obvious reasons, I take a lot of my cues and my beliefs from what the Bible says. And in 1 Corinthians, Paul specifically says something to the effect of being all things to all people. And in his freedom, we have responsibility. I may be free to do something, but it means that I have a responsibility to those who I'm in contact with, or I'm in communion with, or I'm in a relationship with. And if it means that I have to be one way to someone and a different way to someone else, then that's what I have to do. I realize that there are some offenses that are taken by something that is symbolic. And I realize that there are folks who are hurt by that. On the same side, there are some who feel like it's a part of their heritage. And I do think that as we continue to have this conversation, we are going to be learning from each other, and I mean both sides of the aisle. There are things that we need to learn about each other. And it is my hope that out of when all of this is said and done, and we're done with this, and the issue is under the bridge, it's water under the bridge, we're all going to be friends, we're all going to love each other, and we're going to be set up to move forward and be educated together. And that's all I have to say. Any other unfinished business?
All right, moving on. Is there any new business that board members would like to bring to the table tonight? Hearing none, we will move on to announcements and information. I have two brief ones. Lois, could you come forward? I'd just like the board to be aware of a program that I was extremely impressed with this week.
On the Dr. Kastner's first day, actually, we were doing a professional development session. We had Lori McCullough, who is the interim executive director for the Virginia Association of Supervision and Curriculum Development, presenting an in-service to us. We had principals, supervisors, instructional specialists, Jennifer Weaver, and myself, and the topic was on coaching. And what Lori McCullough did is present an in-service to us on coaching, how to use coaching effectively, how to partner, how the coach and the principal partner strategically plan and make the most effective use of the personnel that we have. It was an excellent in-service, given us lots of strategies to go back and use in the schools. Unfortunately, the next day was a little weather issue. So we had two days planned, and she's coming back to work with us again on November the 20th, which does give the teachers, the principals, and the instructional specialists some time to talk and plan together in the meantime. And then when she returns, they will have very specified time to plan together and also to plan separately, to look at the best strategies to use in our classrooms and our schools. So very pleased to have her.
One way of looking at it, when you send teachers to workshops, you have a chance for about a 10% of your investment. When you do the coaching, your chances can get up to 90%. It was good to see this practice. I was glad to see it. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, can you come forward? We have at least a comment or two about Mother Nature.
Well, Lois just gave me a good segue into this next announcement. As you realize, last week, we had some weather issues, starting on Tuesday, and with the flash warnings and the flash floods and so forth. But we wanted to publicly commend our transportation department and how they responded. We had to make an early decision to release the students earlier than we normally do, and with that, we made a contact, or I called down to Transportation, and Ms. Muma and her people down there was able to respond to get all our buses, bus drivers back in place, or at least most of them, to cover all the bus routes. And I want to say that specifically, the bus drivers did an excellent job in getting our folks home. They picked them up at 11:45 and got them home. At least they finished all the routes by 3 o'clock that day, and they did it without incidents. So they should be commended, and we appreciate all the hard work they do down there in transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. We want to offer our condemnation... Not condemnation. Commendation, whatever that word is, to you guys. Excellent job. And Dr. State, and I know I'll echo this from Dr. Kastner, thank you for helping out with the decisions next week, or last week, as we were making the transition. You guys have really served us well.
Well, and I'd like to kind of piggyback on that. I've heard some comments through the week, oh, they let them out at the worst time, the public school's wrong, y'all. But, you know, going out... I live right at the end of Christiansburg, heading toward Pollet, where there were mudslides down in Rogers, and at 3:30, they closed the road, and nobody used that. You know, and that's one of the things I've shared with people. Just because you see what's going on here in town, you don't know what's going on out in the county. And I think the public needs to remember that. They need to remember that it's not just about the ones that are right here in our town limits. And I think sometimes we forget what goes on with that. So thank you so much to the bus drivers and everybody.
Absolutely. Anything else, Dr. Kastner? No. All right, any other announcements or information, board members? All right, next on the agenda is our upcoming school board meetings. We all get to do this again in a couple of weeks, on October 20th. You can see the items there. And then our... We begin, or continue, our search for a new superintendent at the end of the month as well. With that being said, this meeting is adjourned.